Right now, we have about half of what we need. We have to have CDL Class C. You don't have to have the big air brakes or anything like that. Do you know anybody, if you're retired and you'd like to, or like to retire? I would like a job driving a bus in the outsides. So, anybody have any questions about this? And if you do, and if you think of something later, please call down to SCAT office and talk to Izzy.
What is the average, is there like an average fare, what this will cost someone?
A fare is $1 right now. So, and that would be if so, say Mayor, you get on the blue route and you go to hop on the red route at the exchange, you'd get an exchange ticket. That way, you're not charged twice.
Okay. So, wow. So, even if you're switching routes or anything, it's still just a dollar.
It's a dollar. And right now, we're doing like the old fashioned manual. You know, if you go to the bigger cities, or actually some of the rural cities in this, in the city of Ohio, in the state of Ohio, or anywhere in the United States, you'll see everything's electronic apps, everything. We just don't have the funding to put into that. We want to make sure these routes are going to take off. And if they do, then we will invest into those. And I can write grants for those and get most of that paid for through grant funding. Right now, what I've done is I've gone to the other sites that have upgraded and have given us their fare boxes, their cameras, and those type of things. So, it hasn't cost us anything. Kind of like garage selling, if you want to say, going out looking for used items and they're, they're going to throw them away, or they're sitting in a closet being, collecting dust. So, we're pretty excited about this. It's been four years long coming, and we don't know if the city has anything special they would like. You know, it's called deviated, which means that we can change it up a little bit. Like if there's a football game, or there's a business, or a big park thing going on at Hedges, we can move it around. That's why we call it deviated. If you put fix, you can't deviate off of that. But this way, we're allowed to go around and help, and help with congestion of traffic flow and make sure we don't hit any pedal when I said we're going down.
Counselor Jones.
Isabel, are you going to have a punch card of some type, or are the drivers going to be handling money back and forth?
There's a fare box. There is no, the drivers will not touch any money. They will keep a tally, old fashioned tally, you know, how many passengers. It's a dollar per person, so it will even out. We're looking at hopefully, the colleges will maybe add some like to the tuition, and the college students just show their ID and they can ride free. We're hoping something like that. And Izzy will give you the hours that we're going to also operate. Because like I said, we're trying to make sure we get the second shift also at the industrial park. So, she's going to let you know what the hours are right now.
So, right now, and mind you, this can change depending on what, what the demand says. We have Monday through Friday, the red route, those governmental services again, 8:00 a.m. to about 5:00 p.m., running right with when those services would actually be open. The white route, which is that employment, the industrial route, a little bit before 6:00 a.m., all the way to 1:00 a.m. The blue route, the shopping, medical, restaurants, et cetera, about 8:00 a.m. to about 6:30 p.m. And then on Saturday, kind of cut back a little bit. The red route is shortened because of course, not all of those governmental services are open on Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to about 12:00. And then the blue route, the shopping, medical restaurants, 8:00 a.m. to about 1:00 p.m.
And again, this isn't set in stone. This is a trial and error. We're going to try this out. That's why we haven't made a bunch of brochures or anything. We will make a few, but we're going to adjust them as we go. Because as you know, going down through Tiffin at 6:00 o'clock in the morning is much different than going down at 7:30, 8:00 o'clock. So, times are going to be adjusted. And if we make stops and you feel like there's, you know, that's not safe, it's not going to be, right now, we can't drop anybody off here because there's one-way roads, and we cannot drop into traffic. They have to be dropped on the curb. So, we will never drop anybody off here to see you, the mayor. We can drop them off at the corner to walk down to see you. But that's just because of the design of the streets and the way public transit has to operate.
All those darn one-way streets in Tiffin.
Yes. Come back to bite us.
How many more drivers do you need?
We need about five more drivers. We need two non-CDLs, and then we need three CDL drivers. And we need a full-time, second-shift dispatcher.
We have two council members retiring at the end of this year.
Yeah, you pass a drug and alcohol test in the background.
I don't know about the background, but.
Well, the first 100 passengers will receive a free t-shirt. We're going to do some promotional things, those that are already in. And again, anytime you want to just drive by the SCAT office, or stop out, or if you want us to bring one of the shuttle shuttles, unfortunately, I have a CDL and I can drive it. I have a feeling I might have to be driving it if we don't get drivers. But we'll be more than happy to bring them out to show you, or if you have a festival going on and you want the bus out there, that's not a problem.
Counselor Jones.
Trying to stump Izzy, and I haven't done it yet. Sometimes I go to all these and I don't have a quarter to get a cart. Let's say I want to get on the designated route, and I don't have a dollar, I have a $5 bill.
You just made a $4 donation. Thank you.
I thought I'd stump somebody, no?
No, they won't be dealing with giving change.
You can buy a pass for $5, so that means you have to ride four more times.
Mary and Izzy, is there anything the city can do? Is there anything you need from us right now, or that we can do to help other than just help promote this?
You can help promote it, but look at, when she gives you the design with the stops, I ask that you look at them and make sure that you think this is safe, and it's something that you think will work. And we're not opposed to anybody giving us their thoughts on this. We need your help because it looks good on paper, as we found out, but when you get out there and actually drive it, no, it's not cool. But we don't want, you know, transportation be the reason someone says they don't go to work, or they can't get to the shopping malls, they can't go out to dinner or something. We want to make sure that we're able to service everybody that we possibly can. And our hopes are that this grows, and it keeps growing, and that maybe there'll be another route. I don't know. I would like to see one connecting Fostoria to the Tiffin area also for employment purposes. And it wouldn't be, you know, it'd be like five days a week, maybe three routes, one, two, three, you know, three times a day. These are dreams we have. Right now, I'm working on one in Galleon to Ontario. We're trying to make it three days, three times a day, trip over that way.
I would say for us, really think about that, that lot six as a potential exchange for us, riding this around. I've driven the route, I couldn't even count how many times I've driven the route. Honestly, that is the safest location that I've seen for letting people on and off, and the space, and just flow of traffic and everything. So, really keep that one in mind.
And when you think about it, it can't be on a, we can't let off in traffic. So, one-way roads do kind of hinder a lot for us. Right now, we're trying to figure out where to drop off at the courthouse. We're looking at between, like in front of.
Court Street.
What's it called?
Court Street.
Court Street. But then, we have to watch when the prisoners are there, lock the road off of the prisoners. So, we're trying to find a place, that area, that way people can go to the courthouse and do their business, or see their attorneys, or whatever probation, whatever they need to.
I think overall, this is very exciting. I really do hope it takes off because you really can't, you can't make the trip on your own in your own vehicle for that price, really. So, it would be nice.
We'd like to see you on our buses.
Yeah. I think that we'll all happily do that and help you market it as well.
Yes.
But if you send me the PowerPoint, I will forward it to the council members and then include both of your contact information to the council members, so that, or Izzy's, I'll put an arrow that says her first, and then we'll put Mary way down at the bottom so that you all can.
She will be going on maternity leave before too long, so yeah, I will end up with.
Okay. So, we'll just include both of your contact information, so until, until little Izzy arrives, or whatever we're calling him or her.
It's a him.
What was that?
A boy.
Oh, Tim, is that what you said?
Tim. I call it Evan, she has a different name.
Do you have a, unless, in case I missed it, is there a date when you plan to have this up and running?
We're hoping, we're looking at the September 13th, provided we can get employees. We have had a hard time getting applications, but in the last week, since the unemployment stopped, we've gotten probably 15, 16 applications. And so, we're going through them, and again, we need a few non-CDLs because right now, we have, right now, we provide demand response. And we have two CDL drivers over there that are possibly going to be jumping onto this one because they already have their CDLs, and they already know the SCAT policies. And it does pay more than it does for the regular, the non-CDL positions. So, we have two that may be jumping over, but then that's going to leave a hole in our demand response. So, we got to make sure we get it even out. But we've interviewed seven, eight people so far, so it's coming along. It's exhausting, but we're, it's a good exhaustion. We're excited about this. This has been long overdue and long coming, and I have not given up on finding a trolley for the city either. I'm still working on that.
We would love to see that. That's how this all kind of started years ago, when we started the conversation. It all started from, how could we get a trolley in Tiffin? And it's gone from that to where we're at today. So, we still don't have the trolley, but we're going to have routes now for individuals to be able to get to where they need in the community for, I don't want to say nothing, but next to nothing, I mean, a buck.
Yeah. Right now, the first eight, the first six months, we have 100% paid for. I will know, I thought I would know by now, but I put in funding to capture the whole year. We'll get 18 months of no-cost local match at all. Nothing from us raising money to asking anybody for money. But the third year, we probably, or the second year, we probably will have to reach out because we have to come up with 20% of the operating cost. But we'll worry about that one.
Yeah. You said that's year three?
Year, well, two and a half.
Two and a half? Okay. Year two and a half? Okay. Well, there'll be a lot of time to get some good data between now and then.
Yes. And that's one thing, I want to get a lot of that data, and then we'll go from there to purchasing the apps, and where people can see it on their phone and see. Right now, we just had phone lines put in today because it's going to have a separate number than the SCAT. It's not going to have anything on SCAT except one little six-inch circle that says, you know, operated by SCAT. The rest of it, you will not see SCAT operating, a different phone number, everything. Because we want to make it like its own sort of entity.
Any other council members' questions, comments?
No.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you joining us. Yeah, we will see you on the bus. I would also encourage you to try to work with our economic development team at TSET because they function as our community development agency for the city. I would love to see them partner with you all, and even I see Bryce out here from the chamber. It would be nice to include them as well. And the publicity and the assistance that those two agencies can give you will only obviously assist ridership and, and developing this service.
Our first goal was to hit the commissioners and the city council, and then we're going to reach out to Bryce and probably Mr. Z.
Fantastic.
I have been working with Nick Dutrow on the industrial route times and all of that.
Great. Okay. Fantastic. Good. Good.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to. One little negative, we do not have any sound online, so anyone watching from home on social media is not able to see. We don't know. That's why I stepped away and talked to Tom. He can't seem to get the sound up as well. So, we're not really sure it's coming through on the, is it? Okay. Good. So, okay, so those folks that are watching from home, we apologize. I don't know when sound came in, but we have sound again, so just ignore what I said there for the last little bit. Very quickly, our financial update on the city. As we had warned everyone, the month of July would be rough. We are down 18.7% for the month, which is to the tune of $122,000. But really, that is not as severe yet, at least, as what we expected. The income tax deadline being pushed back last year, of course, affects this. All income tax returns, or at least the ones that are timely, have already been turned in for this year, whereas last year, we were still collecting them. So, overall, the number to really keep an eye on and look at is the year-to-date number. We are still up compared to last year at this time, at least as the 16th. We don't have today's numbers yet. We're up 15.9%, which is $886,000 ahead of last year at this time. Very solid numbers. As we near the end of July, we'll have a solid idea of exactly where we are financially by the end of the year. But very good news on the financial front for the city's revenue. Stimulus update. This may be one that you do not want to hear. The state of Ohio, in its infinite wisdom, and our just esteemed governor, and the State House, decided to eliminate a large portion of our stimulus funding. So, we talked, the city of Tiffin was due to receive 3.45 million in stimulus funds. We now will receive about 1.8 million. They unilaterally, without speaking to any of us, or asking for our input, took the money away and are divvying it up to the townships and other entities instead of taking the money away from the state's enormous pot of money that they received. Instead, they're taking it away from cities, which it's nice to see the governor following in his predecessor's shoes, Governor Kasich, who decided to try to castrate cities. We now have our governor now doing the same thing, taking our funding away from us. So, that's being sent to the townships. The state, of course, is not taking any of their own money, at least at this time. So, it's very, we can't thank the governor enough and the state officials for eliminating this funding. I did let our state rep and state senator know how unhappy I was with this, and they told me there could be more money coming our way, but there are no assurances. So, at this time, as of today, we know we have 1.8 million now available to us from this next latest round of stimulus versus the original 3.45 million. So, sorry to report the bad news, but that is, that is what it is. I do want to give everyone an update on the electric vehicle charging stations. This morning, at our department head meeting, the city administrator informed me that since it was installed, we've had 133 users, which is, I think, a very solid number. But kind of an anecdotal story, I was in Reno's before the last concert downtown, and John was just hooping and hollering about how, in a good way, about how great they were. He said that from that Friday, and then that Saturday of the concert, he had four people in his business who, none of them had ever really stopped in Tiffin, done anything in Tiffin, but they stopped either on their way to the lake, or their way back from the lake to charge their vehicles, went into his place to eat, and were doing shopping in downtown. So, that's exactly what we had hoped that would happen with these charging stations. So, he said that he thought at first that he was wondering why we were eliminating a couple parking spaces, and the busiest crammed lot, and this and that, and he just, he can't speak highly enough about them. So, and I've heard other similar stories from Bailey Wicks, the coffee shop, to other locations downtown of the same thing. Individuals to and from the lake are stopping to utilize those charging stations, and while their cars charge, they're then going into our businesses downtown, and they're exploring the community. I think Dale, you said the average charge time was about 32 minutes per vehicle.
Yes.
To charge it from an empty battery all the way to being charged. So, that's just extra money that is being spent now in downtown Tiffin by those charging stations being utilized by, by individuals. So, I think we're very pleased with that. And of course, that is really with no marketing either. We have, we've not done anything other than a social media release about the stations being open. There's a small sign down there, but there hasn't been any kind of a real marketing effort. So, if we were to try to market these even further, I think we can only drive those numbers up quite significantly. We are still collecting the data for a couple more months, and then we will, as we mentioned, institute a charge to recover our electric bills. But at this time, it is still free for the next couple of months until we do figure out exactly what we need to charge individuals. We don't want to charge too much to where they don't come back anymore, but we also want to charge a competitive rate that allows us to still recover our fees for the electric usage. So, those four, or excuse me, those 133 users have still spent less, it's cost us less than $450 for them to charge their vehicles. So, it has not been much in the way of money at all expended. But as I mentioned, once we have a little more data, we are going to start charging a fee to at least cover our minimum costs with those stations. Milling work is set to begin, at least we hope, weather permitting, this coming Thursday on Melmore Street in Tiffin. That is part of ODOT's urban paving project. If you remember, when Matt gave his presentation earlier this year, ODOT is paving the entire length of Melmore Street from where it begins in the city all the way to the city lim, well, actually, all the way to the county limits, but the portion that we, of course, have jurisdiction over is within the city. That is going to begin Thursday of this week, weather permitting, and will last, of course, for several days, as that is a wide, long street here in the city. ODOT will mill and pave that. Once it is completed, they will continue the work on Melmore on out, then they will be coming back and also paving portions of South Washington and South Sandusky this year. We love the program because we only have to put in a 10% match to all of that work that they're doing. So, we're putting in a little over $130,000 into that project, but, but getting a ton of pavement done on those three main thoroughfares within the city. And of course, we leveraged road and bridge funds to make that happen. And then also, we are done with all but one street as part of our normal, non-grant-related street paving program this year. The last street on the list is Vine Street, and we're waiting because there's construction work in the area. What we plan to do is, if you all recall, we are doing our OPWC paving project this year in mainly areas in the second ward. When they come in later in the year, in August, September, to do all of that work, they're going to also hit Vine Street to go ahead and have that completed. So, we're, if you look at the actual amount of streets being paved, we're only about halfway through this year. But then, local, single dollars that are not attached to all these grants, we are almost completed with those projects. But we still have all of these different grant, grant paving programs where we've put in match funds to get them completed. match funds to get them completed. Public Works has been extremely active. If you drove recently across the Market Street Bridge down by Quanis Manor, I liked the way Brandon described it. It kind of looked like a leopard or something like that. We had spots all over the street, not like a Steve Leopard. Wasn't quite that smooth, Steve, is it? They were working, so for some reason, all those bridges, those that have been alive in the community or lived in Tiffin long enough, know that they are all replaced within the same amount of time period. We've had all kinds of problems with the surface of Market Street Bridge, but nothing with the others. Potholes have opened up, so they went in, and those little leopard spots, if you will, are all areas they identified that there are issues with the concrete. We don't know if they got bad mix that day, if they poured and it had rainy conditions or what it could have been, but there are issues with that bridge and that bridge alone. We are responsible for the fixes. When the bridge itself, the span, actually needs replaced, ODOT will do that, but we are responsible for surface maintenance of the bridge. So they're out there actually excavating a lot of that concrete and using some new technology to fill it in, to try to eliminate the areas that are poorly, poorly laid concrete? I don't know, look at the construction guy over here to tell me the right term, but they're going to try to excavate all of that out until basically they hit solid concrete so that it will greatly extend the life of the bridge. So that's some ongoing maintenance work that, again, road and bridge funds have been, you know, absolutely crucial for, that they're able to get ahead of that project. That's something that we probably just would have continued to fill potholes if it wasn't for things like the road and bridge levy and other proactive measures that the city and the engineer's office have taken. So kudos to Brandon and his team for coming up with that. They're nearly completed, but it really should extend the life of that bridge and keep us from expending a lot of big dollars down the road. They're also nearly caught up on alley grading finally. This year was not easy. They had some equipment breaks and other problems, but alley grading is nearly caught up, and they're also trying to get ahead of our tree maintenance program right now in the community. If you look, we've had a lot of high wind days in the last few years where we haven't actually lost a whole lot of trees in Tiffin compared to other communities. And that's because Brandon and the public works department are so proactive at getting out and trying to trim a lot of these troubled trees that are in the boulevards and stay ahead of things. So we really do appreciate the job that our arborist and the Tiffin Public Works Department is doing there. Scott Ballinger informed the city administrator and I today that Aqua was actually ahead of schedule on their Ella Street main replacement, and barring extreme weather, they will be done well before school starts. So Ella Street will be open, if not on schedule, ahead of schedule, which means well before first day of school to where there would be all that congestion. So we're very happy, just continue to pray that the weather holds out so they can stay on schedule, but that was very good news this morning. Speaking of Ella Street, we are going through an appraisal process with the replacement of that bridge. There's some land that the city is going to have to acquire in order to do the construction work and a little bit of street widening. So we are in the process of working to have an appraisal done. It is an agency that the state of Ohio selects to do those appraisals. They're out doing the work now, so we will be coming to you. There will be the need for funds. We don't know what it is. The appraisals are not back yet. We are hopeful, there is a large area near Aqua property. We're very hopeful that Aqua will potentially donate that land that we need, as the same with the Tiffin City Schools. There is a small piece that is owned by Tiffin City Schools that we need access to to replace the bridge. So we will continue to keep everyone updated of that and once the appraisals have come in. We are moving forward with plans to replace the Rock Creek wall collapse next year. The design work is underway. It's actually nearing completion. We're expecting that to cost about $125,000. I really want to thank Heidelberg University because they worked with us to allow us to do a much cheaper fix on the area that is just as good of a fix, but it's more of an earthen embankment versus building a large wall like existed now. The wall would have cost probably $100,000 or more than what we are spending on this with just more of a natural earthen embankment. But we had to do something because eventually, as the engineer's office informed us, that would have eroded away to the point that it would have compromised our bridge. So we have to get in there and fix it. You can't just let it natural like it is now with the collapse of the wall. So next year, we will include this money in the budget to go ahead and get that wall collapse fixed so that we can put it in the rearview mirror. I want to congratulate Tiffin Foundry and Machine for receiving their grant from RGP and Jobs Ohio. Rich, I don't know if you remember, that was one of the first factory tours you and I did back when you were at Sidec, and I was the mayor. I remember you picking me up. There was snow in the ground, and for some reason, I can remember you with that Jeep from Sidec offices. Yep, you picked me up, we went out there, and that was one of my first factory tours upon becoming mayor back in 2012. And it's nice to see they're still going strong. They're planning to add jobs, they're adding machine investment into their facility and continuing their commitment to the city of Tiffin. So very good news. Also, congratulations to Best Taco and Breakfast Spot. They had their ribbon cutting last week. That was a huge ribbon cutting, lots of people there. Really appreciate the chamber putting that on and all of the ribbon cuttings. I joked with Bryce that it feels like there's a ribbon cutting almost every day now. I don't know if that's because the chamber's just getting creative with ribbon cuttings or there's just that much going on, but we're going to say there's that much going on, right Bryce? And also, congratulations to Dr. Chris Sears. He had his ribbon cutting today at the new location out across from the Willows. I think it should be exciting for all of us, knowing that when we created that road, we were kind of doing it on spec, hoping that things would develop, so that we now have our second tenant out there. It's pretty exciting because Chris said that his establishment will be the first facility in the state, or excuse me, first facility in the city that offers, you know, your family care, but also offers behavioral health services all in-house. So he's excited, he thinks it's really going to grow the business, and was joking already, well, maybe serious, about the need for an expansion. So we're very happy to hear that things continue to go well with Dr. Sears and his practice, and we hope that we're in the near future breaking ground for yet another business on that site so that we can eventually complete the roadwork all the way through to market. Some events to mark your calendars. This coming Thursday, the 22nd, at 7:00 p.m., Thursday night tunes from the Tiffin Parks and Recreation Department. That is held at the East Green Amphitheater, weather permitting. Then this coming Saturday, there are two wonderful events. We have the farmer's market downtown from 9:00 to 1:00, and then Crystal Bowersocks is playing at the East Green Amphitheater at 8:00 p.m. Then, of course, we probably all know, but just a reminder, the 26th is Fair Week. Fair Week kicks off Monday morning, 8:00 a.m., out at the fairgrounds with the opening ceremony, then Fair Week all week long. The 31st, July 31st, is the Downtown Tiffin Summer Stroll. And then, last but not least, for you dog lovers, August 17th and 19th is the annual Dog Swim at the City of Tiffin Swimming Pool. The last day for people is the 15th of August, and then Dog Swim is the 17th and 19th of August. $5 per dog, and the, all of the proceeds from that will go to the Tiffin City Schools' therapy dog, Kennedy, for cancer treatment. As we all know, Kennedy was diagnosed with cancer and has to go through some very expensive treatment. The prognosis is good, as long as they're able to get the treatment. So however many $5 dogs we can cram in there, all of those proceeds will go to help Kennedy and cancer treatments. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I've got a question. The money that we were supposed to get, the three and a half million or thereabouts, was that voted on by the General Assembly or did the mayor, or, excuse me, the governor arbitrarily decide that those funds are not?
No, it was General Assembly, and then governor signed it. So it was done through the, both, two of the three branches of our state government.
Well, one of the things that, when I was doing the economic development, always, one of my pet peeves was that there are 88 counties in Ohio, and there's one county that never has a recession. You know where that's at?
Franklin County.
Exactly. And you've got 87 counties that are constantly feeding that animal down there, and this type of stuff, it continues to happen to municipalities around the state. And the other thing is that you look at the effort that we've put into developing our community, bringing in new jobs, working with employers, all, Columbus benefits from all of that, and they benefit with every community that does that throughout Ohio. And then this is, this is, this is the thanks, this is the reward, this is the way they look at us. And it's really disappointing. So I guess my question to all of you is, and I don't know that it'll do any good, we did this with the COVID response, we sent a letter to the General Assembly and the governor, and we never heard a word from anybody. But do we want to, do we want to send a resolution down to Columbus and tell them we don't like it? I mean, are we just going to sit here and take it, or at least open our mouths?
Yes.
Will it do any good if we send a joint letter down there?
Well, we've got representatives, at least they'll know that we don't like what they just did. At a minimum.
I know not doing anything won't do anything, so it doesn't hurt.
I mean, it should be upsetting to all of us. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Mayor, did the state really give any justification for why they made the switch, or?
No, because when I asked one of the individuals at an event why it was done, I was told that they weren't, they didn't even realize it was done. So I don't know if it was crammed into a bill or how it came about, but all of a sudden, I started receiving calls and emails from some of my fellow mayors asking me if I was aware of all of this, and it seemed to have been, I'm assuming was slipped into something else, because no one seemed to be aware until they all of a sudden got the notification of this. It's just very disappointing because, you know, we're not saying the townships don't need the money. That's not it at all. It's just the state's not eliminating their pot of money. They're taking it away from us to give to the townships, and I think that's what's frustrating. And there were over 450 entities the last three rounds of stimulus in the state of Ohio, many of them smaller townships, that actually did not even file to receive any of their stimulus funds. So for them to just take this money away from cities, to give them to these communities, and that was part of what I was told from one of the groups was that, well, those entities, since they didn't file last time, we're going to try to get that money back and we'll probably give it to you all. But when you start hearing all of these, we're going to try to, and we're going to probably, you start to realize that if we see any of that, is it even going to be too late to use the money? And it's just a shame how this kind of stuff happens in Columbus without any real conversation, because they, if they were going to do it, they had plenty of time. We have until the end of 2024 to spend the money. They could have had a conversation with all of us versus just surprise, we're eliminating nearly half of your funding.
Well, at a minimum, we should get a response from our elected representatives.
Right.
If they voted on this, and they should, they should explain to us why they did it. That's my feeling about it.
I agree.
Councilman Gillig.
Sorry, perhaps I'm just in a little bit of a mood, but, I mean, that's frustrating because in a little bit, when we vote on 2157, I'm going to give an explanation as to why we need more money in Parks Department for pool chemicals and for the day camps, and they weren't even aware that this was slipped into a proposal?
Apparently so.
That's a little frustrating. I guess that's why I really like local government.
So, does somebody want to make a motion that we, that we prepare a resolution to send down to our elected representatives, however you want to word it, that we're, have a law director put something together for our next meeting? We can let them know how we feel about it. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, I would so move and ask our law director to prepare legislation for our state representatives, telling them how disappointed we are with the stimulus package that they have just cut.
Thank you. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Councilwoman Yonah Toone?
Even though that's a resolution, can we even add to that somewhere separately? And we want to know why? Because the resolution's not going to do anything.
Well, we want a response from them.
We can ask for questions. We can ask for a response, sure.
I'd honestly like to see you all invite them to a meeting.
That's just what I was going to say.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's invite them.
Yep, see if they come.
I'd like to tell them we'd expect their attendance before the end of the year. They're out in summer recess right now, so what's the excuse?
There you go.
Councilman Roberts used to make those requests.
We miss Jimmy.
Well, we could certainly do that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Anything else, mayor?
Nope, I think I've stirred up enough.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brett T. Howard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So you are informed of the content of 11 ordinances that are introduced tonight. I wanted to go through the body of ordinances 21-60 through 21-70. I won't go through the subject matter of each one. These all pertain to the proposed changes to the charter based on recommendations from the Charter Review Commission. I wanted to go through the structure of each ordinance, of the ordinance, so you can then, as you study them over the next two weeks, you can, you can understand the content and then answer any questions that any of the members of the public may have. So looking at the ordinance, this is ordinance 21-60 through 70, all the structure of each are the same. The title of the ordinance references the code sections or the charter sections which are being amended. So you can highlight, you know, that part. And also, it talks about the subject matter. For example, 21-60 mentions that it removes the reference to partisan primary to make it consistent with Section 10.01, Article 10 of the Charter. That deals with the idea of a open primary for the election of, nomination of elected officials. It also makes reference to gender neutrality. You may know that there's an effort in the changes to the charter to take out all of the gender references, to make it gender neutral. And so you'll see in each of the ordinances, they, any of the ordinances that deal with gender neutrality, that's also referenced in the, in the title of the, of the ordinance. First, whereas provision of the ordinance makes a point that the content was recommended by the Charter Review Commission. So again, that was a lengthy process, many meetings, some of which you attended, public was, had an opportunity and did provide some input, and out of that process were these recommendations. Section one of the ordinance, ordinances, it reads the actual language that will, that the new section of the charter, how it will read with the amendment. So for example, in 21-60, it references 3.08, and so you can see the entire new language of 3.08. Then if you go further in Section 3, that has an important section because it actually lays out the ballot language, the question asked to the voters. And as you can see, it starts out always, shall a section be amended? And then it gets into the specifics so that hopefully, when the public, they're at the ballot box, when they're voting, they will be able to understand the, the content of this particular provision. And there are 11 different questions, and they're based on groupings of subject matter. Section 4 of the ordinance references that the clerk will deliver a certified copy of the ordinance to the Board of Elections not later than September 3rd. And that is a date that is 60 days prior to the election. And in the state constitution, in order for a charter amendment to be placed on the ballot, it must be presented to the Board of Elections 60 days prior to the election. So you think, well, it can be 30 days? No, there is a constitutional requirement that it is delivered to the board 60 days prior. Let's talk about timeframe. Tonight is the first reading of these ordinances. You've called for a special meeting next Monday at 4:00 on the 26th, and that will, at that meeting, there will be the second reading of the ordinance. Then the third reading will be at the first regular meeting in August, August 2nd, at which time, if it's, if these are all passed, then the are all passed, then the, the signature of the President of Council and the mayor, and immediately upon those signatures, it becomes effective, because there is an emergency. The emergency is to make sure that it is timely filed, the ordinance is timely filed with the Board of Elections. Again, the constitutional date is September 2. However, the Board of Elections, this is quite a bit of content for them, and so they need as much time as possible to make sure that it is properly printed on the ballot. And so the sooner we can get the, the language to them, the earlier they can then work with their printer in order to get the ballot language exactly as you have adopted in the ordinance. Usually in the process, I recall, they send the proof of the ballot language to, to me, and I can proof it on behalf of the city. So the earlier you can get it to the Board of Elections, the better. Then if you go on to Section 6, Section 6 directs that the clerk cause the full text of the proposed amendments to be published once a week for two consecutive weeks, in this case, in the Advertiser Tribune, not less than 15 days prior to the date of the election. And that is required by the Ohio Constitution and the Ohio Revised Code. So there will be ample notice through the newspaper for the voters to, to read and understand prior to the election, prior to voting. Section 9 is the emergency clause. And again, as I stated, it, the reason for the emergency is to timely file the adopted ordinances with the ballot language to the Board of Elections. So that's the, the content of each particular ordinance, 21-61 through, or 21-60 through 21-70, 11 in total. They're grouped based on subject matter. As you read through this, if you have any questions about why the, the groupings were made, please ask any questions, but I think it's rather self-explanatory. Any questions about the content, structure of these ordinances?
Anyone have any questions for the Director of Law? Councilman Jones.
I guess I, when we City Council present this to whomever it is, I got this from 10 years ago, from the Board of Elections, and there was one, two, a buck in my shoe, seven charter amendments on there. And I know I voted, I look back, I voted 10 years ago. I'm not going to tell you how I voted on these, because I don't know how I voted. But I'm sure when I voted on this, 403(c) and Section 4, and Section 3, and Section 7 was meaningless to me. And I guess I'm just, when the person goes to the ballot box, can't we make this simplif, simplif, simple enough for them to understand? Is what I'm trying to get at. Because, yes, I voted on these seven. I'm not sure, I'll be honest to say, I'm not sure what I was voting on, because I really had no understanding at that time.
Yeah, a couple of things in response. It's up to you now to look at the ballot language that is in the ordinances, and if you have any concerns, if you think that it's not clear enough, you know, we can discuss it, amend it before passage if you choose. But the idea is that, you know, you have a limited amount of space, and each of the questions does reference specifically the codes, the charter section. It does also, in the sentence, state the, the subject matter. In addition to the ballot language, the ordinance asks that the Board of Elections provide further notice, and I believe that they do, because I provided in the past the full context of the, the language of the code section. So not that people may, may do so, but if they have the opportunity, they can, before they vote, they can go over to the side of the room, and they can read the entire proposed amendment. So that will, there will be an opportunity for that, in addition to the public notice in the newspaper that I, that I mentioned earlier. Any other questions? Okay, I just have one other. You mentioned the concert, the mayor mentioned the concert on Saturday night. The Warm-Up Act is local attorney and my friend, Martin Coop. So make sure you get there at, by 8 o'clock, or maybe even a few minutes early, and you'll get to listen to Martin perform before what some other act is going to be after him, right?
Maybe he's the feature ass.
I thought he was about ready to say he's performing.
You wouldn't want to pay to see that. No. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 21-16, Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, grant for $500,000.
Mayor's request for legislation number 21-16 will be forwarded to the Recreation and Public Property Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 21-17, granting lease to Development Solutions LLC.
Mayor's request for legislation 21-17 will be forwarded to the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 21-18, sale of land to Development Solutions LLC.
Mayor's request for legislation 21-18 will be forwarded to the Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee.
We have Finance Director, Director of Finances, request for legislation F-21-25 to amend the 2021 budget ordinance, 21-11, to appropriate funds into the Parks Department budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-21-25 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 21-59 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And then we have the mayor's letter of appreciation to Joseph Granata for his work on the Parks and Recreation Department and on the Planning Commission.
The mayor's letter will be held on file in the clerk's office. I'd also like to thank Joe for his dedication over the years to the city of Tiffin, our community. He always had Tiffin's best interest at heart in everything that he did. He was a valuable member of council for a number of years, and we want to wish Joe and Eloise and his family God's continued blessings, and great thanks to Joe.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. Now under oral communications, anyone from the attending public who wishes to address City Council can do so by coming to the podium, signing in, announcing your name, and present your comments to the President of City Council. We all know who you are, but I have to say that.
I know. So I feel like I have to write this down. Hello, Council President, vote. Rest of City Council Administration, it's great to be here, always great to be here in this great community, and it's my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce to you our new team member, Karina Haynes, who is the, our new operations manager. Karina was selected after a rigorous six-month process. We had between 30 and 40 applicants from around the entire state, including from Dayton, Columbus, Springfield, Southern Ohio. She is someone who is a Tiffin resident. She is a magna cum laude graduate from Tiffin University with a degree in business. She went to Fremont-Ross High School. Her most recent position was with First Step, covering, providing domestic services to a variety of different counties. They actually set up the first domestic violence shelter in Ohio and the fourth one in the country. She's really running their operations, performing a variety of administrative duties, everything from information technology to standard kind of administrative things, fundraising, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. She wore a ton of hats, did it extremely well. In addition, she is a volunteer with CASA and has served as an advocate for many children in helping the courts make the best decision. So she won over, you know, we narrowed it, we interviewed, the entire team interviewed 12 people, the board, we brought the three best finalists, and we ended up with Karina. We are super excited. She has completed her first week, and she came back for the second. We think that's a good sign, although we were in a meeting earlier today when we said, you know, and she's still here, and she goes so far. With that, I'll give you, I'll let Karina Taka introduce herself a little bit to you.
Good evening, you all. How are you? So my name is Karina Haynes, as he said, and I'm originally from Fremont, and I moved here for school, and I just fell in love with the community. I really like what it's all about, and I'm glad to be part of an organization where I can truly see the community grow, and I get to be a part of something great. And that's, you know, I'm just glad to be a part of this community, and I'm glad to be a part of the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership. Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
Well, congratulations, Karina, and we look forward to working with you, too, and you're joining a great team. Got some wonderful people there, and we're all praying for your continued success.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Council. Bryce Friggs, the Executive Director of the Psycho Regional Chamber of Commerce, often just a, often just a spectator, but just want to say, was unable to attend the last meeting, but just flew by my one-year anniversary with the Chamber and Destination Seneca County. I just really wanted to publicly state, thank you for all of your support in my first year. I know the administration, as the mayor said, we have ribbon cuttings almost every other day at this point, because we missed a year because of COVID. But just wanted to thank, we've had almost, I think, every council, every ribbon cutting we've ever had, we've had at least a representative from the city be there to congratulate this, the business owner on either growth or an anniversary or that milestone that they have. So I just want to thank you for that as well. And then also with Destination Seneca County, so much going on in Tiffin and Seneca County. Really, it's an honor to love this job so much and promote all the things that are happening in the community. We just hired a new employee, Marissa Stevens, which I'll bring her to a council meeting next few months. But if anyone's had an opportunity to meet her, she's a local product of, of this community, moved to Utah. We brought her back to the community, but she has a lot of energy, actually more energy than I do, which is hard to believe, but I just want to say, thank you. And it's, the first year's been a little crazy with COVID and everything, but obviously, looking forward to the future, looking forward to working with you all to promote this community, to make the best place to visit and do business. So, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Bryce? No? Keep up the good work, Bryce. Appreciate your enthusiasm, love of the community. Wonderful things are happening at the Chamber and TSEP, so all of you, keep it up.
Thank you.
We're your number one fans. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to motions. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move to amend substitute ordinance 21-51 by, I'm sorry, I would move to amend ordinance number 21-51 by substitute ordinance number 21-51.
We have a motion, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Yonatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 21-51 by substitution. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Are there any other motions? All right, we'll move on to resolutions.
Resolution number 21-12, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving the appointment by the mayor of Brook S. Edwards to serve a term on the Architectural Board of Review from the passage of this resolution until December 31, 2021.
This is the first and only reading of Resolution 21-12. Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a passage of Resolution 21-12.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass Resolution 21-12. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boil.
I will second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to thank Lisa Swicker, who had served in this role. She resigned because of, she's going to be very busy with some projects, so she resigned a little early before her term was over. That's why you see this, only until the end of this year for this individual.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boil.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yonatuno.
Yes.
Resolution 21-12 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Substitute ordinance number 21-51, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for preparation of the engineering and design or for criteria architect slash engineer services under a design-build process for the Riverview Estates sewer replacement project.
This is the third reading of substitute ordinance 21-51. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for a passage of substitute ordinance number 21-51.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass substitute ordinance 21-51. Is there a second, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Yonatuno?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Within the last several weeks, the mayor, the city administrator, city engineer, and public works superintendent met with an engineering firm and determined that a design-build construction method may be beneficial to the city of Tiffin for the Riverview Estates sewer replacement. In order for the city to explore this possibility, ordinance 21-51 needed to be amended to allow for RFQ process for, to identifying engineering firms on a design-build service as an alternative to the typical design of constructions, plans, and specifications.
Thank you. Anyone else? No further comment. I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage of ordinance 21-50, a substitute ordinance 21-51.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boil.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yonatuno.
Yes.
Substitute ordinance 21-51 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 21-52, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent easement from LSCS Incorporated or current property owner at 60 Heritage Drive for storm sewer purposes and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-52. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-52.
We have a motion for the immediate passage of ordinance 21-52. Is there a second? Councilman Gillig.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boil.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yonatuno.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. Will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-52.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boil.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yonatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-52 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 21-53, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for constructing decorative stamped concrete in downtown Tiffin and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-53. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-53.
We have a motion for immediate passage of ordinance 21-53. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boil.
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I recall correctly, six weeks ago, when our committee met on this item, 80% is being paid by whom? Can you help me out, Mr. Mayor?
On the, the overall urban paving program or just the sidewalks?
On the stamped concrete.
The concrete is being paid for by us, but it is our local dollars. The OPWC, or it's not OPWC, the urban paving program that they're doing through the city on all these streets is, is, I think, 90/10.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boil.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yonatuno.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. Will now vote on the passage of ordinance Will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-53.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-53 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 21-57, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to appropriate $2,000 into the Parks Department budget for pool chemicals and $4,000 for day camp programs.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-57. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for council to forego our three-reading rule and ask for the immediate passage of ordinance 21-57.
We have a motion to suspend council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-57. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig.
Well, now to explain the $2,400 in more detail than the 1.8 million that disappeared from the stimulus funds. So with the unprecedented use of the pool, we're going to run out of pool chemicals, so we need those. I'm pretty sure the bill is late, if I'm not mistaken. And then with the high usage of the day camp programs, they're in need of supplies, and my son has been really enjoying those, so it's, it's a really neat program.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, clerk will call the vote on suspension, please.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-57 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 21-58, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to appropriate $15,000 into the civil service budget for materials and supplies needed for the police lieutenant and the deputy fire chief tests.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-58.
Ordinance number 21-59, introduced by Bridgette Boyle. Ordinance amending the 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to appropriate $450 into the Parks Department budget for telephone use at the pool.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-59. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask, I would like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-59.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-59. Is there a second? Councilperson Perkins.
Sorry. I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Someone help me out on this. $450 into a telephone use. I haven't been to the swimming pool for years, so not familiar with the setup, but I just can't believe kids and adults with cell phones, maybe they don't take them to the pool, but what is this $450 for? I mean, there's a phone there, you gotta wait your turn to use a phone to call mom or dad or someone, so I'm confused.
Oh, completely reasonable question, Councilman Jones. I received the email from Kathy. It is due to additional phone use because of the high usage of the pool and also to accommodate for the square transactions that they are using.
It's a credit card reader attached to the phone.
Attached to the phone.
It gets billed through that phone line.
Okay, thank you. That explains it.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll vote on the suspension of 21-59.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Giannatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-59 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 21-60, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to Section 3.08 of Article III of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to remove the reference to partisan primary consistently with the provisions of Section 10.01 of Article 10 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin, providing for the holding of open primary elections and to provide for gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-60.
Ordinance number 21-61, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to Section 3.09b of Article III of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to authorize delivery of notice of special meetings of council to the mayor and members of council by delivery of notice by email to them at their city email addresses as an alternative to the other methods for delivery of notice provided to them for, in the charter and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-61.
Ordinance number 21-62, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to Section 4.02b of Article IV of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to change the number of affirmative votes of members of council needed to waive the requirement of three readings of proposed ordinances or resolutions from three-fourths to two-thirds as permitted by the general laws of Ohio and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-62.
Ordinance number 21-63, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to Sections 4.04a, 4.08a, and 4.09b of Article IV, Section 7.05a of Article VII, and Section 9.04d of Article IX of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to provide for publication of ordinances, resolutions, and various notices by posting on the city's website and by publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city and alternatives if there is no such newspaper of general circulation, and to provide gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-63.
Ordinance number 21-64, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to Section 5.01 of Article V of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to clarify the procedures to be followed in the event of a vacancy in the office of mayor at different points during a term, the duration for which the president of council would serve as mayor during an unexpired term if willing. The method of selecting a qualified elector to serve if the president of council were to refuse to serve as mayor and the circumstances under which the president of council would be restored to that office after serving as mayor on a temporary basis and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-64.
Ordinance number 21-65, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to Sections 6.01a, 6.02e, and 6.03a of Article VI of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to eliminate residency requirements for the Director of Finance, the city administrator, and assistants to the Director of Law to bring those provisions into compliance with state law and to provide gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-65.
Ordinance number 21-66, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to Section 7.03a of Article VII of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to provide that the mayor shall appoint all the members of the zoning board of appeals subject to approval by council and declaring an emergency.
This is the first, first reading of ordinance 21-66.
Ordinance number 21-67, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to Section 8.02 of Article VIII of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to expressly permit the city to utilize alternative methods of contracting and procurement authorized by general law to provide notice of requests for bids for procurement contracts by posting on the city's website in addition to publication in a newspaper of general circulation if, in the city if there is such a newspaper of general circulation, and to provide for additional methods of giving notice for the purpose of generating bids and to provide general neutrality, gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-67.
Ordinance number 21-68, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to Sections 10.01, 10.02, and 10.03 and 10.04 of Article 10 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to clarify that candidates for all elected offices shall be nominated in open primaries in which candidates may, at their option, set forth their party affiliation or not, to specify requirements for statements of candidacy and petitions, to provide procedures for filling a vacancy due to a death, withdrawal, or disqualification of a duly nominated candidate and circumstances in which right in voting for an elected office may occur, and to confirm the times and method of conduct of primary, regular municipal, and special elections of the city and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-68.
Ordinance number 21-69, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to Section 11.08 of Article 11 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to define the term "person" as used in the Charter to mean an individual and not a corporation, business, trust, estate, partnership, or association, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-69.
Ordinance number 21-70, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to Sections 3.06a and 3.07 of Article III, Sections 5.02, 5.04, and 5.05 of Article V, Sections 6.03b of Article VI, Sections 9.02b, 9.03b, and 9.04b and C of Article IX, and Sections 11.01a and 11.02d and E of Article 11 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to revise and clarify language of those provisions to provide gender neutrality and accurate references to the office of the Director of Finance and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-70.
That concludes your ordinance, Mr. President.
Good job.
You should have recorded that. Next time I will.
All right. That, that it?
That concludes your ordinance, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of our agenda. Does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Councilwoman Giannatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. You've assigned me 21-17 and 21-18, and it looks like it needs to be handled in a more timely manner than waiting until my August 3 meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
So would it be best this week, or can we try to figure out a way to do it Monday while we're doing all these other quick meetings Monday, or is that not soon enough either?
The ones that we, just so we have legislation. Yeah. Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Monday would be fine.
Yeah, like Brent kind of said, that we just need it by the next meeting in August, ready to go, so anytime between now and then.
Okay, so Steve, you set up a meeting at 4:30?
No, I have, I have no meeting to set up at 4:30.
Okay.
You want one?
No. So, and Bridgette, are you okay if we do a 4:30 since we're already here at 4?
Is this the 26th?
Yes. It should be brief.
Sure, yeah, 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 yep.
Is this where we're already here?
Yep.
Okay, I would like to announce that the economic development and downtown planning will also be meeting on July 26 at 4:30 immediately following the other special meeting at 4 to discuss legislation for 21-17 and 21-18. One involves granting a lease to Development Solutions and there is a sale of land to Development Solutions and any other further business that might come before the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilperson Perkins.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same about the grant. Is there a timeframe we need to do this in? Is it immediate?
Yes, the deadline to submit is sometime in September because we have to score applications. I sit on a couple of the committees that do the scoring for this. The first week of October is when we score them, so the deadline is sometime middle or end of September.
I'm good to set the meeting at the next council meeting?
Yeah, we just need to meet, well, we need to meet between now and the next council meeting preferably so that the legislation's introduced at the next meeting.
How long's your meeting going to go?
It's probably going to be about five, 10 minutes.
We'll do it right after that. What time you do it? 4:30 or 5?
Or maybe, didn't you say you have something else?
Immediate following.
Don't you have something at 5?
I'm just going to have to move that now.
Well, but he could go at 4:45.
Yeah, immediately following.
Yeah, I will, I will just move my, my 5 o'clock.
It'll be quick.
Shouldn't take very long.
Without Zoom, this makes it easier if we're already here.
Are you going to announce that?
So you want to announce it?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Recreation and public property meeting, July 26, immediately following the economic development downtown planning meeting.
Or? Thank you. The purpose to, Zach?
Oh, for Mayor's request for legislation 21-16.
And any other business that may become before your committee.
Yeah.